Okay, members of the planning commission, I think you guys had a chance to go through, that was a test. But if you guys got their phone numbers, you can pass it to me. Please turn it off. Uh, members of the planning commission, any chance to go through the agenda? Any questions on the agenda? No, if not, take a motion. A motion to approve the agenda, do we have a second? Motion, second, both of you, paper. Okay, let's move on to the declarations of conflict of interest. Anything, anything?
Um, I want to state, I do not have a conflict of interest, however, there's been some accusations in the community, and I'd just like to answer a few of them. We own a ranch in Peterson, and our property is not part of the development. We have not sold our water rights, and I have not taken a bribe to vote in favor. And I'll do some preemptive denial. I have not robbed a bank, and I have not committed murder, yet. But, however, I've been, it's become a distraction to the planning office, and to the planning commission, and probably to the applicants, so I will abstain from voting on the decision. But just to clarify, I do not have a conflict for Wasatch Peaks, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if possible, please be asked by nine o'clock, if we will pass out. If you didn't hear that, uh, member stated he's late at nine p.m. Okay. Before we move on to the public comment, I just want to take a minute, just to thank everybody genuinely for coming out. I know this is a little bit different venue than you're used to, and if you haven't had an opportunity to come onto one of these meetings before, it's a little bit, little bit different. Different in the sense that the expectation is that we have an opportunity here tonight to hear from each other. So, I just want to make it very, very clear, it's important for us to respect each other in these meetings, so if you have something to say, get up, and we want to hear from you, I want to respect your opinion and want to hear it. What we're going to do for the planning commission, as you'll see us taking notes as you come up here and speak, that means we're listening to you. We really want to understand what the issues are. So if you can please, to the best of your ability, stick to the issues, and let's do something a little bit different than the rest of the other counties do, but let's be more convenient, and let's listen to each other, and we really hear what we have to say. I also want to give a plug for us here at the planning commission. I work with a lot of people, I work in the Florida Forest Base, in case you're wondering, but I work with lots of people that live in different cities, and they go to a lot of different meetings, and I watch a lot of public meetings that happen online, Suffolk County in particular. And there seems to be this sense that there's a bunch of people up here that really don't understand the issues, or aren't really kind of into the issues. I want to tell you, we are. We have spent countless hours going through code, state code, our ordinance, also the applicants, and trying to figure out what is the best administrative, in some cases legislative decisions that we can possibly make on your behalf. So, I don't want you, what I want you to do is, I want you to presume positive intent when you come up here, I want you to assume that we're not just kind of going through the motions up here, we're taking this very, very seriously, and I hope you do too. There's a lot of key issues, and this is a very, very, it's a very important time for our county. A lot of different opinions on either side of the spectrum, and it's really important that we hear each other so we can make the best decision for all of us. Do you guys agree with that? Yeah? Okay, we'll take that. So, having said that, we are, most people don't understand what this process is, so forgive me if I continue to ramble on about things, but it's important for me that you understand where we're at in the process and what this process looks like. So even on our agenda tonight, you'll see that item number six, Frontier State's Concept Plan, has an administrative function, so there's no public hearing for that budget. Item number seven is a, is a public hearing for Wasatch Peaks. There's a little bit of a difference, but we don't want to make you feel that difference, so what we're going to do for public comment, that's normally the period where the public comes up and tells us how bad the roads are in Warren County. But, we want to extend, we certainly want to hear from you on that, but that's the time when you, when you're asked to come up and talk about Frontier Estates. So we kind of want to separate the night a little bit, too, so we'll do public comment. First, if you don't have anything to say about anything on the agenda with something else in the county that concerns you, please come up first, and we will capture those ideas. And then after that, if you've got something to comment about Frontier Estates, please come up at that time, state your full name, just where you live, you know, Front Peterson or whatever, so we can get it on the record and really capture your ideas, and we need to get in touch with you for further information, that's what we're writing that stuff down for. So you'll have public comment, you'll be able to comment on that, and then after that, we'll go through the process of hearing from staff and the applicant, and then you'll hear us painfully go through a bunch of discussions on our own. And that's the time when I really want you to understand, that's the time where we need to be able to talk to each other. So please, just keep your comments to yourself there in that time, and allow us to work through this process. Does that sound fair? A lot of information to start with? Okay, good to go. So having said that, we are going to go and move into public comment, and again, I would ask, first, if you have anything to comment about that's not on the agenda tonight, please come up first. If no one comes up, then feel free to start coming up and comment about Frontier Estates. If it's Wasatch Peaks, you'll have your own separate opportunity to talk about that after that. Clear? Thank you. And I think that might suck, too, so the first person to come up?
Nope, it's on.
Is that back on?
If you turn it off, they all go off.
Any comments? Good evening, my cathy Collins. Is that, is that on?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for all of your preparation, obviously, I know it's on this agenda, it requires a lot of hours of reading, and it's not fascinating reading sometimes, I know I have to enjoy it. Um, we're here tonight, many of us do, we feel protect our homes. We've been told multiple times by the state agencies and hired experts that we have a great risk in developing this particular property that neighbors ours. I know this was brought forward back in 2007, it was 15 lots, now it's six, so it's a small subdivision. However, the footprint encompasses a large area that is directly affected to what we're concerned with. Even more important than the size is its location. I want to, in all those papers that you've received from us, you have many surveys and quotes and things, but I wanted to just quote two of them, that kind of show the reason that we're here, to oppose the development in that area. The first is from Darren Rasmussen, at the Department of Natural Resources Water Division. He quoted in 2007, that reactivation of the landslide is possible in future wet years, or if erosion occurs, mirror or at the top of the slide. Eastward migration of the stream channel, additional stream channel incision, or headward erosion from a failed critical reach area may destabilize local slopes of the historical landslide at this site. This was brought before the county council three different times, back in '07, it was denied, and we then went back to the county planning commission twice, and when it was brought back in December, it was, it didn't get a second. One of the quotes from that meeting was Mr. Gardner, Mr. Gardner sta, and these are county by the county laws. Mr. Camp Gardner stated that he had spoken with Mr. Ashland from the Utah Geological Survey, he recommended that no building should occur on the west side of Frontier Road. The map provided shows at least six lots. Mr. Gardner told Mr. Ashland as saying, that there will be a major landslide west of Frontier Road before those mortgages can be paid off. Now, I want to note that that quote was given after the two wet slides that we have already had in our subdivision. You have the records and reports, and the reason that we're opposed, because of the devastating repercussions to us, obviously, having spoken with every state expert that I know who's worked on this property recently, in the last two weeks. You guys have been working with Steve Bowman and the USG, to hazard division of our sensitive land ordinance. He said that I could extend to you, that he would be happy to consult with you in this particular site. Because of the creek, the public landslide, and the soils and everything, he said that you need a landslide expert to weigh in on this, and that they would have to be happy to advise the county, because of dry creek area, and effectively it has Darren Rasmussen from the Department of Natural Resources Water Rights Division has reached out to you as well. Basically, last year, we had a really dry year, which was great for the landslide, very scary for other reasons. This year, it's been wet, but that was beautiful, but it also gives us concern because of the negative effects of wet years for us. We're asking that you help us avoid more problems. We're told that you can build anywhere. Well, that's true, you can build any, but that doesn't mean it's going to stay there. Buyer beware, and I'll get a GeoTech to sign on on it, or some of the quotes that we've been given, and that doesn't give us any peace of mind. I know that you need to uphold the laws and the codes that allow people to apply to build, but we also are asking you to uphold the state code, which allows your judgment, especially with the compelling public interest, for public health, safety, and welfare. We will always have the shadow of being vulnerable to Mother Nature, and we're asking you to protect us from men. Some things have been done in this county that shouldn't have, others have been done very well, and you're part of that process, I'm sure that many things will be dealt successfully and safely. We appreciate your diligent efforts. A judge that has been monitoring this situation for some time, he told me that the legal term for you passing this decision would be that you ignored the great weight of evidence in this matter. So, we are asking that as you exert your authority and your judgment in your decision tonight, that you use caution and your conscience. Thank you.
My name is Dave Cannon, and I live on Frontier Drive in the country of Minnesota. Just quickly, to the point I wrote it down in my box, so it's clear. I'm here tonight to express my objections to the latest attempt to put additional comments on the end of Frontier Drive. I'd like to preface my remarks by saying that I'm not opposed to Grove, to North Family moving Mount Green, who moved to Mountain Green 20 years ago, enjoy the area, and welcome others to move here. Further, I support property owners' rights to develop their land in accordance with the law. I would definitely just temper somewhat by the concern that Grove's new neighbors or existing ones in this area can be significantly impacted by poor management and land stability issues, particularly related to property on Frontier Drive. I think with these concerns in mind, the county last year invited the state to come in and make a presentation about land stability issues statewide, and other counties were doing the lead in this arrest. At that meeting, I don't remember what the film's name was, but we started by showing pictures of significant land stability issues, many in Mountain Green, some even from this area that we're discussing on Frontier Drive. The presenter went on to explain that individual piecemeal mitigations in slide areas are ineffective. Neighbors using different stability strategies may not work, possibly make issues worse to other properties. This point was later emphasized by the county engineer, who basically said that's simply putting a bar on someone's lot, paperwork. I think we almost summoned in Mountain Green, the existing owners' lot, they can't build on it because their costs are too prohibitive, nor can they sell the property to someone else. These impacts are not limited to the current law order, it can extend to the county as well. During a different council meeting during this same time period, developed a plan that the owner of a condemned property was made whole. While that claim was settled in dispute, the county attorney pointed out that the county bore almost a million dollar cost to the demolition of the property and the repairs to that infrastructure. Now, with regards to the current slide situation on Frontier Drive, some may say that it's fixed and no longer a problem, this is not entirely true. Areas in the slide with the nation area continue to see movement. In fact, previously, the homeownership received a letter of reading of their phone numbers placed the mitigations on it. One of those gates that moved so much is to no longer be readable. To be fair, much of this movement is taking place lower on the owner's lots and in their backyards. We recognize that these homes are hundreds of feet from the string bed, and are still experiencing movement after mitigations. Because the creek bed moves, it's been mentioned to the east, it travels downstream, new homes on closed lots can easily move, and dozens of feet of the creek get more susceptible to movement. Further, this is all one big slide area, curb movement on the lower portion of the slide can easily aggravate the aggregate of aggravated uphill conditions where they threaten existing homes. It is for this reason that two lots between this new development and the existing subdivision have never been sold or developed. The Trapper's Point HOA owns these lots, but has never attempted to sell or develop, recognizing the irresponsibility of such an action. In light of all this, I'd like to make the following request. I believe this, that you should postpone this request indefinitely. However, if not, at least consider postponement at this stage as a minimum until the county's sensitive landowners have updated. In previous meeting that I attended, I believe that based on the discussion during the previous meeting, comments made by the county attorney, assertion of handling ordinance already applies to this property. The stadium for corporate, postpone it based on updating the code, clarify the county's position. Second, during the postponement period, I would encourage the planning department and council to work to update the sensitive land requirements, and that the planning commission bring in those from the state, and help define what is being done in other counties, and what works and what doesn't. During the previous meeting, the state representative encouraged Warren County to contact their office, they'd be glad to help with these efforts. Number three, as part of working with the state, allow them to make an assessment of this area. They have looked at this area before, and are very familiar with this, would not be a big effort. Now, I understand that that level of review is probably not required normally, for this stage in the normal development process. However, this is not a normal situation for a normal place. In previous slides associated with Frontier Drive, the state was made, I didn't know there was a problem. We know, but you know, we're responsible. Fourth and finally, I'd like to make a brief statement regarding the water situation. Once again, I do not know of reporting requirements for water at this step in the development process. However, postponing approval at this stage due to stability issues allowed the county to further improve and clarify the code associated with water and water connections. In fact, during the issue with water restrictions last fall, representatives from the water company stated they had self-imposed connection restrictions, and in fact, not issued any will serve letters for some period of years. Further, they stated that part of the confusion was due, was due to what was meant by a will serve, contempt to serve, or whatever the language was for that letter. They requested the county approve and update their water codes for any further extension. Therefore, by imposing a goal down with development on Frontier Drive, the planning commission can provide the water, the water companies, they'll which can update the water codes. Therefore, if this or any other project progress or to a step, the water commitments are required, very clear on what is being applied. In conclusion, for the safety and well-being of not only future residents and neighbors, but also current residents and neighbors on Frontier Drive, I'd ask that we carefully consider your decision. If not, not right now, then at least postpone the significant issues in this area that can be part of the rest. I'd like to thank you for your service on this important issue.
Yes, my name is Robin Casper, and I speak on behalf of the Warner family. We own the property just to the east of the proposed subdivision, and we just want, we do not have a problem with the subdivision, or with the houses being built, just as landlords, as neighbors, we just ask that the houses that have gotten to the side, that go up to our property, that on the flat, that it says that, on the flat, it says that they have a right to farm on the flat, so that if there is any problem, so we still have cows, we still have farm there. Dismissable wellness is the past, and this is one that that's there to everybody, that there's still this farming there on the, on the flats. Thank you.
All right, I gotta stand on the side, guys. Tina Hammond, 52, 73, Frontier Drive. You all have in your packets this week, the packet that I prepared, you have over a hundred pages of documents that were prepared while I was the Tri-Pris Point homeowners association chairman. There's a reason why our association has never developed a plot, we've mentioned that. That decision was made while I was the chairman, it was a unanimous decision. We could have used that money to put in the entryway modifications and updates to the entryway that were promised by the developer and were never done. Speaks to the conditions of our association, and how strongly we feel about this, that that was never done. Since you have the packet, I'd like to point out several themes in the documents that you bought. On page one, time and time again, we were told when we brought it forward, when I originally did this, but the county did not know. It was my effort to make sure that the county will ever, ever be able to say it did not know. And the documents you have before you were in your minutes in 2007, they're in the minutes again in 2018, in the fall. Page one, the unstable condition of the steep slope may also preclude any plans for constructing lots along the top of the bridge in the future Trapper's Point Phase C, that is Frontier Estates, phase of the subdivision. That was a pass and a memo to the developer, that the county also passed. But the correspondence back and forth to the county planning department and the county engineer has been extensive. You have these quotes from May 9th of 2001, from the Geological Hazards Division of Utah Geological Survey. I have talked with Kent Wilkerson at Morgan County and discussed my observations and concerns. I also mentioned the building distress, and suggested the county building official periodically monitor the situation. From June 11th of the same year, our overview of the aerial photographs dated September 17th, 1980, suggests the lots on the west side of Frontier Drive were located on pre-existing landslides, and along three pre-existing landslide scar features that extend for more than a thousand feet in the north-south direction. The currently active landslide appears to extend upslope as far as the westernmost, westernmost, pre-existing scar, which coincides with a prominent break in slope in the natural topography. That's in this phase, that's in this cloud. From June 14th, sorry, that's 2008, let's go back to 2001. September 6th, 2001, to Kent Wilkerson from Francis Ashland, chief geologist at the Geological Hazards or section of the Utah Geological Survey. Dear Kent, attached is my report on the 2001 Frontier Drive landslide. The report summarizes the conclusions of the Utah Geological Survey regarding the landslide hazard and the document site conditions, landslide features, and landslide damage. In my opinion, hillside modifications on the west-facing slope south of the Frontier Drive landslide may cause additional landsliding that could present a risk to any future development. I encourage Morgan County to send geotechnical geological hazards reports from proposed hillside subdivision to the Utah Geological Survey for review. If you have any questions or require additional information, please contact me, if this is phone number. This is from Darren Rasmussen at the Water Division, again, to Morgan County. The film material appears to be locally derived, derived from the same, same claim, LaCustrian, sorry, my geologist's deposits, which slid immediately north of the site. This is the critical reach section, and he tells you why it's unstable, that again, to Morgan County. State of Utah, again, to Morgan County. This is 2002. The dam was constructed on pre-existing landslide material immediately south of the Frontier Drive landslide, immediately south, again, this is in this area. As identified by the Utah Geological Survey geologists in their September 4, 2001 report, prepared as job number 01-7, so it's on their website as well. Then we go to 2007, when it reactivated. Dear Kent, attached is my report on the 2001 Frontier Drive landslide. The report summarizes the conclusions of the Utah Geological Survey regarding the landslide, the landslide hazard and the document site conditions, landslide features, and landslide damage. In my opinion, hillside modifications on the west-facing slope of the Frontier Drive landslide may cause additional landsliding that could present a risk to future development. Do I need to go on, because there's a map that shows you how large it is? It was over a thousand feet long, 300 feet wide. I sent, as the homeowners association president, letters to 15 property owners that had no idea that they were on a pre-existing landslide. You will never understand the responsibility that comes when you notify people that their biggest investment in their life is not worth what they thought it was worth, because they did, they developed in an area that the developer knew, but they didn't pass on the information. Never again will Morgan County ever say that it did not know, and therefore is not responsible for what happened there. You know, we know, it's been documented multiple times, and we know. I can continue. I gave you over a hundred pages of what's going on there, we know. Do the responsible thing. The overwhelming public consideration for the health, safety, and welfare of property owners who are already there, it adds insult to injury that we keep having this come back. It is the reason I requested a review of the Geological Hazards Ordinance. If this can come to any kind of a nod of approval, the bar is too low. Thank you, I appreciate your service.
My name is Brian Burchett, 68, 92, Frontier Drive. Most of my concerns were pretty well articulated by some of the council consultants who were through. There are many concerns in relation to additional housing development, primary concerns conclude by now, number two, severe water restrictions, previously imposed with current investments, documented geological studies ahead of land stability, and documented landslide movement and housing damage. These concerns are the present, for current residents, are most certainly exacerbated by the additional construction and housing, and ensuing displacement of land and water resources. Kind of in a unique position, I own a home directly adjacent to the proposed building site, and view any approval for additional development as a direct threat to the safety of my land and property and the county. I ask that you deny the objection of the state's consent.
Good evening, my name is Dylan Wilson, 68, 92, I have road in Chantico, the Trapper's Point area. One of the things I just wanted to say is really that I've heard stories of various farm flats, lots that have been sold to various, from various developers, and been then condemned as not being able to be built. And I guess, regardless of whether you have an interest in wanting to see development, or obviously sharing the concerns that my fellow neighbors have shared, the question would be, is the county prepared, the council here, prepared to indemnify, or is the developer prepared to indemnify the homeowners who would put their, put their, their, on this land? The last thing we want to see is the council having to step in, once again, as I understand, and I don't know all the facts here, but then having to cover costs for these kind of problems, and then pass those costs on to the taxpayer, which causes more disrepute, as I understand. So, that's really, I just kind of wanted to ask the question of the developer, whether they can indemnify the, any loss caused by damage in landslide that we're currently talking about. Thank you again, thank you for your service, thank you.
Hi, my name is Russ Sheridan, I live at 52, 57, Rondé. I spend a lot of time, I can, kind of looking at the terrain from Sinclair all the way up to Snow Basin Road. If you've seen, belongs to the Basin Road the last 10 years, it's silly, every year, something else moves, something else moves. That comes all the way down to our subdivision of things. That comes all the way down to our subdivision of things moving in, in, along that creek bottom. When it's dry, the soil cracks, you can almost lose a tire in it with your mountain bike. I spend a lot of time poking around down there. But going back off some of the studies that were done in the area, it was noted that pre-existing landslides in the area are inheritable, partially stable, and subject to future total and partial reactivation. Some of these landslides may be active and continuously moving at extreme low rate and very low, low speed rates. Reactivation of any of these large, pre-existing landslides in the area can result in large losses and possess a significant challenge in stabilization. We need to make sure we don't cut any slopes back there because it's going to just, just move again. Traditional hillside modifications associated with residential development destabilize slopes and promote landslides shortly following development. Just as a novice, seeing the water conditions we've suffered through, at least twice in the last six years, we've been restricted in water. Last year, we were blessed with lots of water. But it comes and goes, too much, not enough one year, but just the movement's never changed. When it's dry, it cracks, it moves, and fills up, it cracks, and moves again. But I just want to thank you for your time, and please make note of just the stuff I've seen, just as a layman walking around in the backyard. Thanks.
All right, there's no one else, we're going to go and move out of the public comment. And on to item number six, our amendment.
All right. I don't know how these things work, but I'm going to talk right into the microphone so I can make sure we get a good recording. I am Gina, I am pre- I'm one of the planners for Morgan County. And we, this is a, this is a very sensitive application, obviously, for a lot of comments tonight. I want to reiterate how staff is involved with this process. And just so you know, staff is, staff's authority is strictly an advisory to the Planning Commission and to the County Council. So we are, we are commissioned to review applications that are, are submitted by everyone in accordance to our current code. Our staff report reflects the review of the applications simply on the concept plan. So I'm going to be very brief in my, in my presentation, and then turn the time over to the applicant who is here to, to explain further this subdivision proposal. The property, as, as you are aware, for Frontier Estates is at the end of Frontier Drive, and the general plan is ranch residential, the zoning is RR1. The con, this is a proposal for 11 acres, which will encompass six lots. Our concept plan is very simple and very preliminary. Basically, draw some lines on a map, and there you have it, as long as you illustrate what water you may use, what sewer system you may use, and the geologic sensitive soils that are present, that only have to be written down and illustrated on the plat.
Gina, would you just take, take a minute there and explain to everybody what the overall process is, the concept, preliminary?
Right. So concept plan, like, like I just mentioned, is very, very low scale, and, and it is basically just to give the, and it's illustrated in our code, and maybe that would best be stated directly from our code. Is the concept plan definition, if, I pulled the wrong one, but the concept definition in our code is to give, to give the applicant a chance to discuss with staff, and, and consult with staff to find out what the requirements of the code is for subdividing this property. So it says, "A concept plan shall be required for all subdivisions. As provided in this title, this provides the subdivision an opportunity to consult with and receive assistance from the county regarding the regulations and design requirements applicable to the subdivision property. The applicant or applicant's duty authorized and certified agent shall submit a complete application to the county planning and development services department for subdivision concept review, together with the appropriate application fee as set forth in the county's fee schedule, if a rezoning is required." Acceptance of a concept plan, this is really critical to understand, is the acceptance of a concept plan does not constitute final subdivision approval or vesting of a proposed subdivision. And so when reviewing this application, we're also asked to do it in a timely manner and review it against our concept code. That is what has been done in this situation. Now, the pro, the next step in the process is really where the T, the county has instituted, has illustrated where we really get into the depths of a subdivision to see if it is even possible. And that is the preliminary plat. I could go, I mean, there is a long list of requirements for a preliminary plat, and of that, as this, as this subdivision definitely illustrates, there is sensitive soils in this subdivision. And therefore, this preliminary plat requirement requires a geologic hazard study. Now, then it also requires vesting with water, and it also requires sewer. They have to go through an extensive application with the health department. They have to go through a lot of review, and a lot of work, and a lot of money to get a preliminary plat even ready and available. We have a list of standards that we have to review a preliminary plat for. The concept plan does not require building envelopes, it does not require a geo-hazard report necessarily. But our preliminary plat does, and therefore that is, and then it goes to the final plat. In this case, it's a small subdivision, so our code does allow for a small subdivision to be reviewed after concept. So a concept, as I mentioned before, is for every subdivision, regardless of its size. And then the preliminary and final applications can actually be filed together on anything less than eight lots. So this being six lots, the applicant could possibly go forward with an application if the concept is approved, with preliminary and final to that the planning commission reviews. Now, there are parameters in the code to require the, the planning commission, staff is to review it according to the code and then present it to the planning commission, and that is where your job is hardest, is you get to make the decision. Staff does not make the decision on, on the subdivisions like this, is the county, the planning commission and the county council. But as this subdivision has been reviewed on the basics of the concept plan, we had reviewed it with a recommendation of approval for the concept plan, so we can get our hands on all of that really critical information that, as the public has definitely spoken out for, that we can really get in there and find out if this is even going to be possible. So, and then after the preliminary, sorry, is the final plat, which basically just records it and allows the applicant to sell lots. And then they can get building permits for them. And there's a lot of, a lot of information, a lot of code to go through, and concept is so, so minor that we really wanted to get into the preliminary so that we could really hash this out and look at all of the studies and compare the information. We have an excellent engineer and an excellent geologist on staff that, that we, we need to trust our professionals, and they would be very heavily involved with, with the review at preliminary stage. So I have included in the concept the outline of the, of the subdivision. There are definitely geolo, geologic hazard concerns. I am going to let the applicant finish unless there's more.
No, the applicant, I'll probably have a few questions after that.
I'm, I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll probably have a few questions after that.
Sure, and that's what we're here to answer. We did receive a lot of information after the staff report was done, so you did get an amended staff report. You also got a couple more letters tonight that have trickled in as, as we approached this meeting. So we want to give you all of the information. The public has definitely given you more, and staff recommends approval, but we also recommend that you weigh heavily on the information that's given you. Postpone it if, if you feel so inclined, and that is definitely a recommendation as well, because there is evidence that this needs to be definitely reviewed more thoroughly.
Thanks. Does the applicant hear?
Good evening. My name is Kurt Schen, applicant for this subdivision. Appreciate your time that you guys put in for the planning commission, like last night, and for the staff that have been putting together a great packet for you to review. It's a simple plan, we have six lots. Reason why the lots are larger is because of the, and doesn't match up with the existing, is that the ordinance has, no longer has the cluster development option, which that's what the first two phases was used with that, which reduced it down to 30 acre lots and put the remaining two or three acres open ground. So you have two very wide lots along the east. They are acre each. Then you have, that's in the RR1, you have a frontage, minimum frontage of 200 acres. And over there, an acre for the sides. So as far as the concept, very simple. We're just going to continue on the road, same utilities, high water, mountain creek And as the halls, not halls, the wardens have property to the east. We have dead-end road in there, so access, so that could help them, well, I don't think build itself for a developer, and so that would allow for second access to get into for all of that. Other than that, I think, you know, I complied with all the concept plan requirements. Actually, I moved ahead, I've already done a geo study, and it came back, I mean, they did a very extensive, I think they built five trenches. So it's a very comprehensive geo study. And so they have come back with areas that are stable. But that, again, we'll deal with that at preliminary. So other than that, I think the staff has done a very good job with the presentation, and I'd say I've done everything to comply with the requirements for a concept plan. I'd like to get approval, so I can move forward. Any questions you have?
No, thank you. All right. Okay, the planning commission, discussion or questions for staff? What are you thinking about that? I'd like to run through the checklist for my benefit and the public's benefit. Our code is our code, this is an administrative function that we're discussing tonight. And for those of you that aren't here all the time, you can hear me in better, for those of you that aren't here all the time, the planning commission is either making an administrative decision or a legislative decision. In this particular case, it's an administrative decision, and the best way I can describe it is, we try and match up square pegs and round holes and see if they fit. So what we try and do is, we try and make a checklist out of every application that comes before us, just to see if the application is complete. In this case, our code outlines some very specific things for a concept plan, so has everybody on the planning commission had an opportunity to look at the checklist? I really like this, by the way, it's really nice. All the details. Okay, so specifically the, the most, what has the most interest tonight is item J on our checklist, which is soils and geologic unit information indicating soils, geologic unit types and their boundaries, and any new geologic hazards. The applicant has completed a geologic hazard study, however, this report is not required for evaluation of concept. Consideration for approval of concept cannot include a geologic hazard analysis, this will require a review differently. So there's, the application is complete, I think, I guess that's, that's what I'm going for the planning commission's sake. But as staff said before, there's obviously some compelling information that's countervailing to, to what our code suggests, and that's what I'd like to talk about for a little bit. So there's, there's evidence that this isn't any known hazardous area. That's obviously a compelling public interest that we need to talk about. So what, what do we have to, to help us better make that decision?
So there is historical data, as, as members of the public have stated, and that you have received by member candidate, is there is, there is historical information that states that this area is very volatile. And so with that, there, there can be, you can instigate a further investigation of that information by directing the applicant to provide further information, to have it reviewed by professionals, by, and, and that's how, that's how that would go forward. So you can, you can postpone the application that's currently before you, so that that can be done, or you can approve and wait for the preliminary, it's really up to, to the planning commission. But yes, there is historical data that needs to be reviewed in comparison to the geo-hazard information that Mr. Smith had, had mentioned that he has done already.
So the applicant has someone?
I just have a question to clarify that.
I'm sorry, just, just put the microphone, please.
Yes, I'd just like to have clarification on why you would postpone it, since we're going to be addressing that at preliminary stage. What additional things would you require that would get approval of concept that wouldn't be addressed at preliminary?
Okay, that's a great question. We're going to have some discussion here, so I would just ask that you allow us to have that discussion, and then we'll, and wake you up.
Okay.
One more time, yeah, just, otherwise we'll kind of be doing this all night.
Yeah, all right.
So thanks for that, buddy.
Sure.
Okay, so, planning commission.
Is the more data being collected at this time? From different agencies?
Of different agencies? I, I don't know that. I don't know that. And that's what, that's what we would ask. So we would take the information that the applicant will provide as far as the geo-hazard study that his, that he has done, and, and we will find out what further studies. So he, and, and just so you understand, our ordinance was, we had an ordinance adopted specifically for the landslide and Frontier Drive and Creek Side Drive, and that's our geologic hazards, that we, our geologic hazard ordinance, which is 85I. 85I? And, and it's very specific. It is, there, there's a lot of information in that. And we have a geologist on staff, we have an engineer on staff, that when that study, we do- we do a work plan first, the application, there's a work, a work plan prepared by the applicant's geologist and geotechnical engineer, and then is reviewed by our engineer and our geologist. And that's the process for that. If there's more information that's being studied now, I wouldn't, I don't know. And so we would need to contact the professionals to find out what additional information regarding this area that is currently being studied.
What did you say that was? 85?
85I.
I can have another question. Yes, this is a small subdivision, but we do have the option of kicking it up to a regular subdivision.
You do. And that is in our subdivision ordinance, or the concept plan ordinance, but that is up to the planning commission to do that. So if you feel that it is necessary to break it out into preliminary and final as separate decisions, you can so choose to do that. Do you need the code reference on that?
No, no, I thought that maybe the fact that it's, this is not a routine subdivision, and it is being contested, maybe.
Absolutely.
Might be better to be able to separate preliminary and final.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
Oh, yes, please, okay, please. Mark in Morgan County, engineer.
I was going to ask you about that interaction.
I thought, maybe I could address the process even just a little bit.
Chair, please.
We have this conceptual review process in Morgan County. And Tina hit the nail on the head. It's a very, very low bar. In fact, on item J, there's this punch list we go through, and it is a good punch list, because every time I review them, I just check, 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 and then I tell the board I have done. And on geologic hazards, the only thing they have to do is show what type of soil there is. So in order to get concept plan approval, you just have to show the soil type. You don't have to do anything else. Now, we all know that as you move on to prelim, then you do the geohazard study and everything else, and considerably more information is presented. I represent a lot of clients, and you'll get two arguments on concept plans. A lot of times, people do, or subdivision ordinances include concept plans, because they let people talk to the staff and get an idea through at this level whether they want to buy a piece of ground. It's like, do we want to spend the money to do a geohazard study, to hire an engineer to do all the preliminary plat? Because that's where you spend all the big money. Would want to do all that, we want to first at least go get a concept plan. The reason I don't like them is because whether, even though our ordinance says they're not best, this doesn't give them any entitlement whatsoever to approval of a concept plan. They still feel entitled. And there have been some attorneys I've talked to that have said, yeah, there's still entitlements to the loan. So I don't like these ordinances, but that's, I can get five planters and five planters, but they choose two different sides on that. There aren't positive things about it. Let's potential landowners and developers go, do I really want to spend the money and then get nine? So it's a very minor step in the process. And in this particular instance, at the staff level, staff level on the concept, we knew that we're dealing with some major geohazards issues here. And so I think as, as the county planning staff went through, they met the checklist, and therefore they recommend approval to you, because it does satisfy this low bar that Tina was talking about. And then we're also in the process to answer Debbie's question. They've already started as part, you know, kind of, it's at their own risk, obviously, this geohazard study. And we're in a really weird situation here, because we're working our, reworking our geohazard ordinance. We've been working with Steve Bowman at the, at the state, Utah State Geohazard Unit. And we worked, but we also have some other professionals, and our geologist retired. And so this is one, and as we get into the prelim, they, there, we've had one of the meetings with them where they say, this is what we're going to do. Our geologist said, no, I want you to do this, 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 and this. And they've gotten to that level, but then as they come back and present results, and this is all improvement, by the way, as they come back and present, here's what we want to do now based on what the geologists say we can do. We are in a good position to be able to submit everything to Steve. Steve down in the state's been fantastic to work with. And, and there's nothing that precludes us from getting his input, especially now that our geologist is retired, and, and we have a license, so we need that expertise. And we obviously are going to do that in this instance, particularly considering that we haven't adopted our new geohazards, because the idea behind that was we didn't want these restricted lots where the poor homeowner ends up being the person that does all the mitigated information. So did that shed any light on, again, is that, I just, concepts are, it's a creature that some people like, and it serves a purpose, but it's also, it's so far, it's so doggone low, that, that people do sometimes feel like they're vested or entitled or something. In reality, item J says, did they show the soil type? Check. And therefore you get a recommendation from the planning staff that says, yeah, they showed everything we needed to. But now prelim is going to be a whole different thing.
Unless, this one again?
I have a question. Need to be appropriate to maybe bring that Steve Bowman in at now?
No, no, because again, we're talking concept. The timing's not right. As we move forward, the geohazard ordinance and the prelim, that's when all this investigative work begins. Now, I believe the applicant has already been doing that investigative work. We haven't come back with a formal analysis of that. And as a staff, we're sort of in a position, we're going to have to rely on the state for that information, primarily because our, our geologist retired, but secondarily, because we are in the process of trying to get this new geohazard ordinance in place.
Some of the comments were like the state was already being brought in, is that?
Well, they've been fantastic to work with us on our ordinance. Very, very patient. They've met with us every time we're requested, had lots of good information. We've been very productive in those meetings, but no, other than that, you know, they, they haven't been.
If you can find compelling and countervailing public interest that would be jeopardized by this development and concept, you still can't ask for more information?
You know, that's, that's a legal question. That's, I don't know.
We'll ask staff if they've had any discussions with our county attorney on that one. But you do bring up a really good point. Tina brought it up earlier. There's a pending ordinance right now specifically for this, is that correct?
Yes, we've been working.
Okay, so we're presenting this an application, there's a pending ordinance for. And will it have, could it potentially impact this concept?
Yeah, but it wouldn't impact until the next stage, which is when they go into their geohazard study in the prelims.
Do we know that? I haven't seen, do we know that the ordinance doesn't impact concept?
Yes, we do know that, because we're, as it's being done, we haven't put it ahead of concept. So it's in the same location, it just changes responsibility and it adds wording. And I'm answering the question because I've been in all meetings.
Yeah, we're all looking at each other.
No, but I've been in the same meeting.
I just don't, I mean, I, I get that. My question is, if the ordinance isn't written, how do we know that for a fact? Because it tells.
It hasn't been contemplated, but we don't want to prove that. So we have a contemplate moving in. I'd rather contemplate getting rid of it.
Well, that would impact this as well.
Yeah, well, but you already have a big application, so we could do that just for itself, exactly as expected.
Gary?
Yeah.
Okay, I have spoken with the county attorney about this, and although the staff report indicates that the concept plan application is completed and meets the minimum requirements, the planning commission does have the ability to say, you know what, in light of new information, whatever that may be, that's not just hearsay, it's got some way through it, some studies, that type of thing, that you can postpone, or you do not have to approve this tonight. That you could ask the applicant to come back, and I think the applicant would like the opportunity to, and the community would like the opportunity to, would like to give the experts the way in on what is the exact situation before we give any approvals. So you have that option, probably, at least that's the county attorney's point of view.
Okay. So a lot of stuff to consider. Steve, go ahead.
I don't really have a strong feeling. I'm not prepared for my decision. I've applied for the ordinance, and I haven't studied any of that, so I would postpone it until today.
That's, that's kind of where I'm at. I'm just trying to see how the planning commission feels about this, but there's a lot of, a lot of stuff going on here, and we haven't even had a chance to review it, let alone understand the second and third order effects of what even concept might do to the neighborhood, to the public health and safety. So having said that, I'm there.
Although I, I would like to make the motion that we do ask that Frontier State proceed through the normal subdivision process. At least get that done.
Okay, so what does that mean? What does that mean exactly? Let's look at code.
Well, okay, so if you wanted to, I think you have an application in front of you that needs your determination one way or the other. Postponement, approval denied. And I think staff's recommendation at this point would be to do a postponement, so that this issue of geologic hazards can be thoroughly addressed, we can look at all the facts, and then go forward. And then after that concept plan application is dealt with, then we would make the next determination. Code allows us to say we are only going to do preliminary next. And then, so we would do preliminary and final. Whereas if it didn't have this geologic hazard issue, then, then maybe it would be a combined small subdivisions. We've done several of them this year that were preliminary and final plat were combined. But obviously, this one is not in that realm of a nice simple piece of ground, and there's a lot of questions. We need to look at all the facts and see what it says.
Let's, let's give the applicant an opportunity to come up.
Again, I don't see where postponement does anything what else than what I would be required at preliminary. I don't know what additional information that you would require for concept. I have submitted an application that has met all the requirements for concept. Let's deal with all of that, and I understand that it's a delicate situation, and I understand that where you go probably more than what I've already done with the geologic study, which is required at similar at the time of preliminary, and there may be more studies that I need to do. I understand that. But let's move forward and not just spin here and try and decide if we are going to approve the concept. We've already spent money, let's move forward to the next stage, because I've met everything in the ordinance with the concept, and that's changed.
Thanks. Anything else?
Well, I should just say, and like what Debbie said, she wants to break it out, so you prove it, saying we're going to make this out even longer, preliminary and final. We've still got the geologic study, or the survey or whatever guidelines that they yet have. That needs to be all addressed. And I know, you know, I would just encourage that you maybe put a time limit on when that should be done. Don't delay it, because I want to get moving as fast as possible.
Okay.
What is, I should, I should know. I should know this, I don't, what is the status of our geologic ordinance right now?
So we are currently, we've been working on it. There's some technical aspects that have a little delay. So we have a good draft of a lot of the geologic hazard, and update to, all with updated studies and reports and information. The, the current code that we have has been, I would say, just edited. I don't think any substantial changes, but I think it's been tightened up with help from chartered geologists and geotechnical engineers, both of the state and in the private sector. And then we need to wrap that up and then look at its impacts into the subdivision ordinance, and how we want to handle it there.
So is there a default position for the county right now?
Well, right now, the county has a very good geologic hazard ordinance that outlines all this stuff, and says all these issues must be studied out and dealt with prior to preliminary plat approvals. So we have those standards in place. We are updating them and trying to make sure they're very thorough with the updates that we were ready to start, but it is proving difficult to get done.
I have a couple other questions.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
You mean the history, if you would, of the county? I feel like I work for the county, I protect their interests. What is the history of, actually, I don't know that, that's an important question, or not. What is the history of where they failed? What happens? You can tell me it's not appropriate this time?
No, I think it's absolutely relevant. My, my pause is just that I wasn't here and didn't know, and don't know, and you're as good as a lot of other people in the room. So if you want to try.
History is in our?
What triggered it?
I want to know who is going to be left holding the bag if things go south. I want to know is the county one, maybe the county's back?
So Mark may be able to help answer this a little bit more. So there have, our soils in Morgan County are very diverse, let's put it that way. And, and there is several, several areas, not only in Mountain Green, Porterville, East Canyon area, where soils are of great concern. And there's certain soils that we have a written ordinance on that came into place because there has been a history of landslides. One situation was Morgan County was helped, left holding the, holding the bag on that one, on Creek Side Drive. And then we have the one that's been mentioned tonight, which is Frontier Drive. And that, that, that is what triggered the county to write a more thorough and more detailed ordinance to lock down that professionals are the ones reviewing these geo tech, geohazard studies, and that initiates that study. And so we have, over time, and that's how code works, right? I mean, over time, if you look at the code from 1963, the last one, the earliest land use code that I can find here in Morgan County, is much different than the current code that we have, because over time, situations come up just like this, that landslides happen. There's, there's areas that are, are, that need to be studied further to find out if there is, there is required development. So there is, there's been code that is written, and as Lance and Mark have both mentioned, there's an ordinance in play, there's an ordinance being revised to tighten it up even more. We change code all the time, so to tighten it up, or to loosen it up, whichever way it goes. And so that's kind of the history of it. Morgan County has a pretty solid geologic hazard ordinance, which would eliminate the county holding the bag again. And that was the whole purpose of that ordinance being written, was to eliminate the situations that have previously happened.
So Tina, if I may, the soils where those homes failed?
Correct.
What is the designation on those versus, is this missing property?
It's the same.
Same?
Mm-hmm. But the property was not condemned on the south side or the north side, and therefore our geologic hazard ordinance. and therefore, our geologic hazard ordinance kicks in so that it is further study to find out if development is even capable of being...
So, addressing the members of the community's concerns, if they go in and start excavating?
They're... Yes, so they are not allowed to go in and start excavating under our current code.
Right, but I'm just saying if they did, you give your opinion, I know you don't know, but in your opinion, would that create a problem, a possible problem for people who are involved?
Possibly, yes. So it is a legal question. That's a legal question.
Thank you.
I have just a couple things. I think this comes back to the same thing that we go through every time someone comes in for concept. Concept, basically, from my knowledge, understanding, but it's just allowing someone to write and proceed. It's not... I like what Mark was saying, because sometimes we treat it as, hey, this is approved, so deal. And it's not. They're not publicly carrying on this tonight. It's more of a public comment, voice your concerns. And that problem, I see, is he meets the checklist. So, do we let him go and start doing his research? And that gives staff time to put together everything they need, and that goes out to the public for them to see, read, and then they can come and voice their opinion with the knowledge that's been gathered by staff. Concept, I think, is misleading. It's not approved subdivision. It's just people's right to proceed. And to a certain extent, you know, maybe staff could almost just give concept, not even come to the plat commission because they need the checklist.
Being entitled to land use application number one. And one of them is that the land use authority, which in this case is us, on the record formally finds that a compelling countering public interest would be jeopardized by approving the application and specifies the compelling countering public interest in writing. So, my position is I don't have enough information to make that decision. I don't know if there is enough compelling countering public interest that we can say that this public interest takes residence in sort of this application.
Even though it's a complete application?
Even though it's a complete application. So, to say that we have to approve this because they meet, they met everything isn't necessarily accurate. I didn't know if you had seen that. We had just kind of recently been looking at this in state code.
So, does that play a part in that with the concept, or is that...
Any application.
Any application.
So, and I don't know that we have that, but I don't think we have the information to make a decision on whether or not that's permanent.
So, I may have more information than we did.
That's a great question. I think as a minimum, read through this stuff and get a better handle on what the code says. You'll have that, I promise, I heard you. That would be my position, for us to take some time to read through this and get some more consultation with staff, and then go through what constitutes compelling countering public interest. I don't know what that is. I mean, I presented with a lot of information tonight that I've been able to digest or look through, so I don't feel informed enough to make a decision, aren't you?
Well, I'm fine with that. This is the code. Mr. Smith has met it. So, I'm not going to postpone it for...
And the other thing that's... I'm thinking through is, hey, we have pending ordinance. I don't know what the ordinance is going to say, and how it's going to affect this application. But there is a pending ordinance.
How long are we listed this time?
I don't know. So, that's part of our discussion.
Is there going to be a lot of work on staff's part to get this back to our next meeting?
Not at the next meeting. Go ahead. We're just thinking about...
Yes, I'm just to kind of summarize what I'm hearing you saying, and just answer some of the questions that may be there. This would not be coming back at the next meeting. Postponing it would allow us to look at all the data that has been presented that Mr. Smith has put together, and get the experts to weigh in on that. Where is the slide? Where does it end? Where is this really an issue? And we could have that information before we give any kind of land use approval. It could be dealt with at preliminary. It would have been dealt with at preliminary, but we also, and this is from the county attorney, and because of what you're reading in state code, there's enough information that we don't have to give this approval right now. We can look at this issue, take it from the preliminary essentially, and look at it at the concept plan before we give that approval. And... And so that is an option. There's definitely an issue there. And now that we're at the planning commission hearing, you have a little more flexibility than staff do.
So, kind of in my mind, the reality of it is if we postpone it, it might speed up the preliminary.
That's correct.
You're going to handle some of the issues that we did at preliminary that would then slow it down to make that part.
Any thoughts? Yeah, it's a lot of information, for sure. I just want to make sure everybody has an opportunity. So, the applicant wants to say something again, so let's move through that kind of discussion. Thank you for your patience with that discussion.
Again, I don't see why postponing it tells it, because it's all going to be addressed at preliminary. Read the thing from that this is the state compelling argument. If you get approval, it's not going to do anything. I can't do anything with the land. It just moves us forward. And postponing it, I don't know what then you are requiring is above what is required for concept approval. I don't know if you have...
They're not asking me for anything else. We're taking time to make a decision.
No, maybe you are, because you require more geological study. I mean, that's what you just said, that you wanted to get...
We're having this discussion.
Wanted to ask people to have that. It's not required for concept.
It has it. Anything else?
Yeah, it's just that I live in Virginia, and so I can't come back as often as you want to postpone this, so... But still, at preliminary.
I don't think you're requiring the applicant to... We need to digest the information you do have.
So, to be clear, staff, where our discussion right now revolves around us digesting this information to make sure we make the best decision. Any thoughts? Shane?
Look, I like what Lance is saying with it working that way to give a little bit more information. If we vote with the denial, then the applicant will vote, right? He doesn't involve the county, right?
That's accurate.
So, it is safe if it's something that's not going to be beneficial to the county, there's risk involved and everything. If I wait for a little bit, might help him out in the long run. If it doesn't pass, or he doesn't spend the money, we could... So, I think, you know, for the sake of about three weeks, it would be wise to do that.
State?
Again, I think Mr. Smith has rights. I understand it's true from Virginia, it's hard, but I look at the people who interact with it to decide if things go badly. I feel a little...
No, it's not.
But I look at all that would affect it, and I feel like that's not a bad language. It means that I think it's right, but I think you have... I'm not saying I'm a little upset, but I would like to see it. Be, I can't...
Anybody ready for a motion? Any further discussion?
Well, I think we've kind of talked about postponement, but for what length of time? The problem, he's out of state. If we say month, we say six weeks, we say two months, makes him come back, and maybe we're not ready to make the decisions. So, maybe not put a date, and just when we are ready, when staff is ready, as we viewed the data, and we have had that opportunity, and then put it on the agenda when he's ready.
Additional data?
I would say we can have additional data all over the...
I don't like the idea of putting it off. I want to...
Well, the other issue is we need a good solid update on pending ordinance to schedule this impact.
If we don't have preliminary, you don't have an ordinance. Yeah, that's what we need to do. So, if we get to preliminary, and we're still... I think if we're basing everything off of that ordinance being done, that's going to take place at preliminary, once he has to meet all of that criteria. So, I think we postpone it, but I think we can do it in a tiny manner, too, that does a push your mind to do it.
I think Chair is asking the question, what if the new ordinance does address a geological hazard at concept? If there are certain soils, it requires that concept to be used there. We don't know, just saying, we don't know what that ordinance is, yet.
Yeah, so does that mean that come next February, we're going to have it? Or are we going to have it by July? I just, if we...
I don't know, it's a good question.
Yeah, and I would still look up preliminary, but going off of that part, because that's our final decision. I think if we explore all the material, we can inform staff a little bit, and then, you know, it might not even have to worry about that.
Thoughts? And I'm just trying to help this along. If we have, Mr. Smith has done a lot of work. We have the state that is weighing in on this. I would just like to give, and we have... The problem with concept on this one is we have not analyzed the geological information. We can do that now with your direction, and we can analyze and understand this issue. And then, we'll have it resolved at preliminary, like Shane's saying, or we will have it, you know, prior to, we'll have that information. We'll know what the experts tell us on this. Right now, we haven't technically analyzed that data and gotten the final report on it. That would be the benefit of postponing it. It would not have to be for very long. The pending ordinance would be August, September, realistically. But I think the issue is much more of, let's look at the data we have on the geologic hazards and make a determination on that one way or the other.
Anyway, we are having a lot of discussion that we would like to be covered at preliminary, but right now, we're just asking you to go back and digest this information and give us more additional review of this. So, with that, and take into account that the applicant lives in a different state, has to travel. Just, I'm sure staffs can work with the applicant to figure out the best way to accommodate that.
I guess I'll move the discussion forward. I'll make a motion, and it can be voted down, or...
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, do we postpone the Frontier State small subdivision concept plan application 19.025 indefinitely to allow for additional review and collection of data, and to allow staff time to evaluate the geologic concerns?
Do we have a motion? Does anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second, but I don't have a discussion.
And we have a second. Discussion on the motion?
I'm not comfortable with that, definitely. So, I would vote against the motion. In fairness, just to be clear, we don't have the information to go on by then, so we're fine, second one. We're stopping him. I just think that would make a bother.
Okay, someone want to make a motion for the end of the motion? Bertie, want to bring up a discussion?
Maybe up or down vote, and then we can vote instead.
Can we do that? Shane, you there? Okay, so the motion is to postpone indefinitely so that staff can allow for additional review and collection of data, and allow staff time to evaluate the geologic concerns. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Pose? Motion, go. Okay.
Do you want to make a motion?
No, no, any motion?
I would make a motion that we postpone this agenda, I think, until October. Meeting on October.
First meeting in October based on the rest of Debbie's motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have another motion. Do we have a second on that motion? Got a second? Any discussion on that one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I have a question. If you say October, if the staff gets a report back earlier, can it come before then? Or do we have to wait till October?
You can always petition staff to bring it forward, to make a move.
I have the same concern as...
Yeah, because I think you can have it in a month.
Sure.
Well, we do it before we... Two?
You'd both reconsider.
That we can reconsider the motion, and say a month later. If we rescind the motion or whatever, or just then change it to a month later than the first meeting of October, that would then allow it. If it could be done in two weeks, or you can get on the agenda a month, whatever, then, you know, staff could work a little bit faster when he can actually be available to come to that meeting and postpone it.
Okay, always a rubber for those experts. I think we can vote to...
You're saying we can reconsider that to up or down vote, then?
Okay, go ahead.
Time will let you reconsider the previous motion.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're reconsidering the previous motion. Someone want to make a motion? Bertie, we're reconsidering, go on.
And make the motion that we postpone the decision on the Frontier State's concept plan to allow staff to collect more information on the geological study. The postponement can go till October 1st at the latest, towards meeting in October, meaning that if staff has information quicker, they can go back towards my commission.
Go ahead. Ask the question. If you do have any corrections from staff, they understand. Or that has some...
So, again, the motion is... Or Bailey can do that to us, but the motion is for staff to review the geologic concerns. concerns and bring information back to us and contact state representatives or contact state experts. Does that...
That's all part of the...
Any second, okay, now we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Not opposed, motion passes. Takes care of item number six on our agenda. Let's go ahead and take a...
I need to change batteries in some way.
Okay, so, we're going to take a ten minute break. Anyway, staff, I have a general idea, why do you want to do this? I'm looking for your notes.
All right, Mary, I'll just jump in then and say that, so, what we have, so, staff has just for the remainder of the evening, is, staff's going to do a very brief presentation, give a highlight of the overview of the request, and turn the time over to the applicant to present their application, then staff will go over a little bit of the concerns and the changes we're requesting in the development agreement, and then we will turn it over to public comment. Each of those items will be called by Q and A from planning commission, if you'd like.
Okay.
So, what we have before us is a request for a resort special district. This is a two-part essential request. The applicant is asking to amend the future land use map of the general plan from national resources and recreation to master plan community. And that will be a change in that area. It should back up and say the application. The applicant will show the map. The area is between, south of Mountain Green, south of the Weaver River, all along the mountains on the western boundary of Morgan County, for approximately nine miles, over to Peterson and the ridge above Morgan Valley Road. It doesn't quite get all the way over Morgan Valley Road, as most of you know. The application, staff has reviewed the application and put together a staff report where we analyzed the code itself and those elements. It should be noted that, there's a note in the staff report, I'm just going to read it, so it's easiest, due to the resignation of some review personnel a couple of weeks ago, but the applicant's desire to schedule this and keep it moving forward with the planning commission, staff has put together this staff report that's somewhat preliminary. We've tried to address all the items we could, but between this planning commission meeting and before it goes to county council with your recommendation, we hope to even include more information so that we can have a full assessment of this project. And it's really about understanding exactly what's being proposed, its impacts, and then, really, the key element to this application is the development agreement where we, where the county and the applicant agree to the parameters. We have several development agreements in Morgan County already, Rollin' Ranch, Cottonwood, Snow Basin is an RSD as well, and was a development agreement very similar in what this application is based on, or this development agreement is based on. And so, that app, that development agreement is where our, effectively becomes the zoning ordinance for this property. Now, this is eleven thousand five hundred and two acres in Morgan County. One of the key elements of this application is that roughly seventy-five percent of that area will be designated as open space and not be developed on. And so, we want to be very careful about what's allowed in that open space area, and that is the bulk of the area of concern for the planning, for this planning staff, is that we just want to make sure we address what elements we need to in that open space area, should the planning commission and the county council decide to approve the future land use map amendment and rezone the property to Resort Special District. It's been a process. We have met with the applicant over the last year and a half at least, in various workgroup meetings, staff, along with planning commission members, county council members, have toured the site and seen the property, just the views from the public right away is unfortunately just don't do it justice on how large this property is and how far back it is, how much space exists between Peterson and the mountains. We drive by it all the time and we think we understand it, but there's, there's a, there's a whole area back there, I'm sure the applicant will go more depth. But, it's a, it's a very large property, and staff essentially feels that it meets, with the development agreement amendments, it can be a positive change for Morgan County. It's, let me just back up and say that there are several requirements. I'd like to talk about the purpose of the Resort Special District, and this is from the code, is to permit a compatible master plan mix of various types of residential and commercial land uses in combination with open space and recreational components on land that has characteristics that warrant customized development requirements. Although residential dwelling type and development size will vary from location to location, each development is intended to consist of a well-designed, architecturally-integrated structures which are appropriately landscaped and buffer from the surrounding land uses. There's about eight essential elements of the Resort Special District Code, and the applicant has addressed those. The design standards are an element of the development agreement and address land uses, you know, and details to the level of building color requirements, building location requirements, cut and fill issues, all these types of things are outlined there so that the impact of any development and any homes that goes on there will be minimized. The preliminary meetings with the Wasatch Peaks Working Group that helped, that worked with the applicant and had some meetings on this project, Morgan County did not want to, or at least it was represented, that we don't want to be in there measuring and deciding roof pitch and things like that. What we wanted to do was make sure that there was not an impact coming from the development that happens on the interior of this property that will be visible and impacted out for the rest of the county. And that's why the locations have been selected, you know, the colors need to blend, we want a lighting ordinance that is very minimal and doesn't impact the county so we don't look up there and see a bunch of lights. And the applicant is working this on that, their proposal is in here, and I'll let them talk more about that. The process for the remainder of this is to try and take your recommendations, planning commission, and then, those recommendations will be put together and forwarded to the county council for the final determination on this. And do you have any questions for me?
Is Facebook live working? People are trying to get on the feed and they said it's not working.
I'm viewing it on Facebook, so, I don't know.
Yeah, question. Staff?
Just a few questions for you. Last I noticed you used the word master plan community.
Could you speak into the microphone, sir, we can't hear you.
I was just asking if you use the term master plan community versus RSDs, are they the same?
No, the master plan community is a designation, in the general plan, it has what's called future land use map, where, where different uses, not zones, but different uses are designated. Currently, it's natural resources. Master plan community is one of the areas of land use designation in the general plan. So, that would be the land use designation, which is a high-level guiding goals, policies for the general plan. The second part is the zone, the zone would become Resort Special District, as opposed to forestry in ME 160 to this curve.
Good evening, I'm at Wasatch Peaks Ranch. I want to thank you, Mr. and Lady Planning Commission, for the opportunity to be here and to present the Wasatch Peaks Ranch. I'm here with our team, Becky Zimmerman, Maria Hillenbrand, Vance Bolesstock, and Zach Johnson. So, this property was formerly, or is commonly known as the Galey Ranch. For the last twenty years, it has been owned by the Holden family, the Bass family, and a gentleman by the name of Peter Hicks. We first became aware of this property in February of two thousand seventeen, and for the last two and a half years, we have been diligencing the property and pursuing a concept for our business of a RSD and a master plan community development. We have extensively diligent and worked towards understanding access, the road requirements, the county requirements, water, all of the utilities, and then, of course, the mountain and its potential to be terrain. We've put together a solid business model. For the better part of the last two years, we have been involved in the community in Morgan County, tried to meet quite a few people here and be an active member of the community. We have an office in Salt Lake, and I personally moved to Salt Lake City in February of this year. We want to create Wasatch Peaks Ranch because we enjoy the outdoors and we enjoy outdoor recreation, and we're passionate pursuers of this property and of the land encompassed by Wasatch Peaks Ranch. Becky's going to go through some of the, our concept level plan for our plan and what is, the components of our RSD application.
Becky Zimmerman, this is our child, we are the planners for this property and helping with this rezone. So, Lance really described this Resort Special District, he described what the purpose is that is worded in the ordinance. Just a brief history of how did Morgan County get to have a Resort Special District, and it really started with Snow Basin. So, Snow Basin had created a master plan for the entire resort, which was just over eleven thousand acres, about eight thousand acres of that is in Morgan County. And with that vision, they went to Weaver County to get their rezoning done there and realized that the existing ordinances there really didn't work for a resort. So, in the course of time, they created what is called their DRR1 Destination Recreation Resort Ordinance. And then, coming to Morgan County, they're going to do the same thing. And so, there was a lot of people, and many of them are here in the room tonight, spent well over a year working on that Resort Special District ordinance, and what it should have, how it should function, how it creates a guarantee of what the county could expect, and enables the resorts some flexibility to achieve the wonderful recreation that a place like that would provide. The Resort Special District application is quite extensive, and it includes these elements, the site analysis, the conceptual land use plan, development standards, and that is referred to as the design standards, what are the permitted uses, it requires a full transportation study, a fiscal impact analysis, an infrastructure master plan to show how water, wastewater, roads, and other utilities can be provided and function within the site, and the development agreement. All of these things, it's really in essence, the development agreement is in essence a contract between the owner and the county, and if somebody, if the owner wanted to do something different than what's in this, we got to start over. There's not a lot of flexibility outside of what is documented in this application. So, there was a lot of outreach and communication before we submitted this application. So, in a timeline, Wasatch Peaks Ranch purchased the property on January thirty-first of this year, two thousand and nineteen. But, the work began well before that, and it's, one of the elements was actually, we started a year ago, this month, with the Wasatch Peaks Ranch Morgan County Work Group, which had some representation from the planning commission, from the county council, and from staff. And we met on average once a month to go over the key issues and concerns and elements that would be proposed for this property. And it was extremely valuable, and we really appreciate the time that was put into that to help us prepare an application that had a lot of input behind it. We did do the site tours, and we had a public open house in February, for those of you who remember, it was snowing a lot, and yet, there were, there were over two hundred people who attended that. And then, Ed personally has been around to meet with a lot of folks and, you know, sit at their kitchen table or on their, their backyard and talk about this project. So, this is, the red line is the Morgan County boundary, the color in green is the property known as Wasatch Peaks Ranch. It is within Morgan County, it's the eleven thousand five hundred acres, there is a piece of it on this ridge side that goes into Davis County, so obviously, we can't rezone that here, so that big ridge is not included in that eleven thousand. Recharge any water that's used from there. Another common question, how does this impact my property value and my property taxes? In the state of Utah, properties are assessed in three different ways, always using comparable properties. So, one way is the cost of construction, and that's, that would happen in this case when the project is very good, because that's going to be the best demonstration of value. The second method that Utah uses is comparable sales. So, once those properties start to sell, they'll say, oh, this property is very much like that property, so that is how that assess, or that value is determined. The third is by a potential revenue income that a property might produce. There are no rental properties at Wasatch Peaks Ranch, so that, that all the due allowance is. In this case, the like kind, the comparable properties are only those that are located within the Wasatch Peaks Ranch property. Because so much of the value of that home is tied to the exclusive use of these amenities of skiing and golf and the other amenities that are inside. So, properties that are near Wasatch Peaks Ranch don't have access to those amenities, and therefore, don't benefit from an increased value of the property because those amenities are not applied to the property. And in the, when we talked with the Morgan County assessor, she commented that she didn't see that Wasatch Peaks Ranch would affect property values in the rest of the county. But, there's a caveat to that, I mean, your property values are already increasing, right? There is a market demand for the type of housing that exists here today. Wasatch Peaks Ranch doesn't have and will not have any influence on what is already happening just by the market forces today. Question four, why are the trails and recreation facilities private and only to be used by the people who own real estate here? One of them is that this land has been private forever, and it's going to remain private, and so, that change, there's no change there. And also, the people who do buy real estate here will be paying a lot of money to be able to operate and maintain those recreation facilities. And, you know, the third one is, it's, it's actually a little hard for me to understand because I, I don't, I have a different, you know, life there, or income maybe than some of these folks, so, privacy and security is really important to them. And the... And the ability to spend private time with family in a secure setting is invaluable to the Wasatch Peaks Ranch buyer. And the only example I can give is a situation that I know because they were a client of our firm, that's a PGA golfer, and in his primary home in California, his kids' bedroom doors are fingerprint locked and unlocked. When he goes to Yellowstone Club, which is a private resort, his kids get to go skiing all day by themselves and they meet up for dinner. So that ability to have that family time in a secure setting is really important. Question we get, hey, what about the jobs? At Buildout, we estimate about employing about 600 people in a wide range, so there's managers of the restaurants and the ski patrol and all the different amenities of property management, and so wide variety of skills and employment that we'll have here, in addition to the jobs that will be generated through construction and the different services that will be needed here. The fiscal impact to the county, so we have provided an economic impact report, and the buyer here is primarily going to be a second homeowner. If we look at the most comparable thing, which is Yellowstone Club, 2% of those 800, 683 owners are permanent residents. For here, we estimated 10% for the purpose and the economic impact. Another really important element to pay attention here is we looked at the economic impact based on only 475 homes. The rezone is for 750, but the last thing we would want to do is represent what is the absolute, we absolutely sell everything, what happens. We took a much more conservative number to do that analysis. And with those assumptions, this project at Buildout generates $9 million each year in property tax revenue to the county. And because everything here is private, the expenses to the county are minimal. There's two things that may come up, and maybe in the staff report, that economic impact report was reviewed by a third party that the county contracted called LYRB, and there was one substantial difference. So actually, they agree on revenue, bringing our close, but the difference in expenses, so what LYRB has said is, we're going to base expenses on property value. And RRC, who's the expert that did the report for Wasatch Peaks Ranch, based it on a per person. So we, and these were the elements that LYRB, the difference, so they're saying the assessors, the cost to the assessor's office is based on the property tax or the property value. Our view is it's based on the number of homes, not the value of the home. And you can kind of go through each one of these. So somewhere in there, the LYRB still says very positive economic impact, but if anyone reads through that, that is the difference, you will see. We also get the question of, okay, well, what if it's not 90% second homes, what if it's 50%? If it's 50%, then it still generates $7.1 million of property tax revenue here. Question seven, impact of the school district, if the bill rate stays the same, WPR will contribute about $25 million a year to the Morgan County School District. That is substantial for schools and education for your kids. And, let me see if I can put that, but some people, we had somebody ask, well, how did you make that calculation? So that's what the third bullet point is for whatever going to happen. Talked about this a little bit earlier, well, what if the owner changes their mind and this becomes a big public area with a bunch of condos? Can't do that. This development agreement does not allow that. If, if an owner, if the landowner wanted to do that, they would have to start over with rezoning this property with you all in that process. What happened, will the taxpayers be responsible if the project fails? The short answer is no. These amenities, or, I'm sorry, the infrastructure is all private, there's absolutely no obligation to the county, and there's no known projects in Utah where the county has actually, at the last meeting, the May 23rd meeting, someone used the term, picked up the financial pieces, so I used that here, but the government is not guaranteeing any financing on this project. Another thing to note is in March, April of this year, the Utah Legislature passed a new act, which is the Public Infrastructure District, and that actually creates even additional insulation to any public entity in funding infrastructure that's private. And question number 10, we actually get this question a lot, hey, do you know you need fence out? Yes, we do. And very aware of it, and that we're responsible to fence out camp cattle from developed areas. And we're going to continue to run cattle on, in particular, the southern half of this property and not north. So in wrapping things up, there was criteria for the rezone, the staff may talk about that, but we believe that we meet all of that criteria. And then I think the other thing to note is, this is a rezone, this changes the use of the property, but there are a ton of other approvals that have to happen with this project. So the US Army Corps of Engineers gives us the permit for all the mitigation for the stream crossings and wetlands disturbance, the Utah State Engineer and other entities have to give approval for water. Canal crossing goes to, you know, a couple of entities, and you all can read this, but you're back in Morgan County with plat approvals, you get grading permits from you, building permits from you, so there's a lot of other, this doesn't mean just because it's rezoned that we can go do this property tomorrow, there's still a lot more work and a lot more approvals that have to happen. So I will end on that.
This will bring to our community our advantage, and the opportunity for teams to work locally will increase. Lastly, the property tax agreement that will be generated for this residential development will greatly enhance opportunities for our economic growth without putting additional strings on our current infrastructure. This can help balance the scales of engine economic development and infrastructure, which is greatly needed at this time. The majority of residents do not support continual tax increases, and this development will not add tax strain on current residents. It should actually ease it for residents and those on fixed incomes who can't afford to stay in the county when their taxes have more than doubled in the past 10 years. I strongly believe this is an opportunity that will provide us with a continued lifestyle that binds each of us to our beautiful valley while also boosting our economy. I want to be a member, I am and support Wasatch Peaks Ranch.
I'm Ron Whittier from Peterson, Utah, and I know you people represent us, I'm glad I don't sit where you do, I would never, just would. Debbie, I know you've heard a lot of rumors, so did I. I got a call, I said, we heard you sold your whole farm to this resort, which I did not. We heard you gave them all your water, which I did not. But I want to remind you something, if we listened to all the rumors, I'd be in the state pen today. That's just how it would go down. So before you decide to abstain from voting, if you're not in conflict of interest, you're my representative. I would expect you to vote on this, it may be the difference between yea or nay. So only you can decide that. But when it comes to the Wasatch Peaks Ranch, I just want to say a couple of things. Once you get off exit 93 and you start down the hill, you're going to hit Morgan Valley Drive. Only 1/16 of 1 mile of Morgan Valley Drive will be impacted by Wasatch Peaks Ranch. The impact's going to come with your farm, and I told you in a previous meeting, my dad sold a right of way to Bass, Hicks, and Holding 20 years ago, I can't change that, they go through, but I want to tell you one thing, they've been going through and they've maintained the integrity of the property. And they've been thoughtful, they've been respectful, they've put in the things they need, if they've caused problems, they've brought in gravel, they've put in culverts, and everything they said they will do, they have done. I respect that integrity coming from someone who respects my property too. I can't change the right of way, but I can say they have been respectful of me and of our farm. And I see very little impact to our community and the great tax base, which is relieving. And I would love to see with our new council and with our new planning and zoning that we maybe encourage businesses to come here and give them a reason to be in this valley rather than just a bedroom community. As I look at this development, I think it's a business decision that would benefit us greatly, our schools, our quality of life. And the truth of it is, we can't change what's coming, we can only hope for the best outcome. I believe they bring the best outcome for the things we're trying to accomplish. And I thank you for your time and for the service that you render.
Hi, I'm Anne Seabodyer, I'm from Peterson also, and a couple of things that I just want to see if it's in there is, on how the land is not going to be developed, can there be a conservation easement that goes into effect so that future development will not be possible, just to maintain that integrity throughout? And then if it does go bankrupt, who does pick up the pieces of this normal server, sewer, security, emergency services? They said it wasn't going to be put on the county, so is there like a trust account to cover it? Who is going to pick up those pieces? Since the county, or since the private development did not benefit the community, is it possible to earmark some of the money that will be received from the property taxes for a trail system that will go all the way around Morgan County, you know, all around, the loop as we all would call it? We have lots of bikers, there's not a lot of safety for our children to go around, is it possible to put in a trail system that would kind of bring, you know, we could say their community purchase in addition to our community that's benefited all of us? And then, this is such a huge decision, it will impact all of us, feels like there should be a county vote for that, you know, more than just the few council members, I don't know what the votes are, but I just feel like this is a really big deal and it's going to affect all of us, I feel like, are all must be represented. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Charles Pig and I live in Old Ranch, I live right at the Wasatch Peaks. I'm in favor of the development because it's a super sophisticated property that needs to be developed and I trust where it's there shown. And the benefit that we have on the line is I chose to develop a rooftop there where the people that come to use the townsite and just developing it, we have much support for it, and so that's advantage. But I also think just prestige, this kind of, it really does make our value more than ours, and this is really world-class, having the, the quality of, I think what's hard to see, which the comment I have is that the design standards should be very detailed for this kind of property because how you site each house, and it's comfortable by the pictures, the density is so low, in fact, most of the density is in the Phillips Center that's called, the third, 750 homes is in the Hattaway Village that's site, the other 500 are spread along the length of that, and they said their smallest property is five meters, probably there's one, but here ones, so houses are very far apart, a couple hundred feet in east of the front. I was asking, you have, you haven't thought about the standards for how the land would be allowed to be developed in a parcel, but I would think that the standard would be, you can't touch any tree or any natural feature, you have to site your house. Within that nature, at least everything alone, except for a certain amount of a small percentage. And that kind of quality, actually the kind of thing that just developed wants, people want the, the amenities in this natural environment, and that, they should have that quality, because that'll make our, you shed, as I look at it, I won't see a lot of yards and common landscape, you know, rooftop or two and nature. And I think the other criteria is how you site the houses, because if there's promontories and other things up there, the houses should not be on the promontory, they should be off of the promontory. We don't have what we used, what we call sometimes ego's nest, but if I'm on the top and I'm looking down at anybody, that really ruins the beauty, so we should have that kind of criteria. Houses have to be sited off of the actual promontory in a more natural way, and that would help us get our beauty, and not, not the impact. I'm also very much in favor of the trail system or some way to have a benefit back from this kind of development, to help our, so they can be good neighbors and help us improve our future. But I'm very excited for the prestige of this, something you're moving on.
Hi everybody, I'm Dave Ratchford, I'm a green resident, I'm also the general manager of Snow Basin. We are asked a lot of our opinion on this project almost every day, and what I'm here to really say to everybody, we're, we are excited and sure, it's just like everybody asks about through this process. And we know that the process between Wasatch Peaks and Morgan County will be productive, and we'll be all input, we know they've assembled a great team of people that we've connected with and worked with in our learning problem throughout this process. And we have, we're going to continue to learn just like everybody else, but we wanted to just really immerse our community in the process. That's what's crucial in this, is the communication and the connection between everybody, our residents, the county, and Wasatch Peaks, and we're excited, we pride that we've offered our help, and we continue to keep an eye on, watch for it, so thanks everybody.
Hey, I'm Emily Cox, I live up in the Highlands, and I told Ed this, I'm the fifth great granddaughter of Thomas Jefferson Thurston, and I love living in this county, I loved looking at Thurston's Peak. And I absolutely think that Wasatch Peaks has done an exceptional job through their humility, through their planning, through their, you know, the design works, oh my gosh, they've just been amazing. So I think that with everything being said, I completely just piggyback everything that Lilia and Dawn had said, they've done an exceptional job, and I think it would be a gift to our community to have that with such a minimal impact. We're dealing with exceptional individuals, not just the company, but the individuals that are running this and producing this. It's been a wonderful experience to get to know them. And I do also think that'd be a great idea to give back to our community with different trails and things like that, but exceptional job, amazing people, so please on the record, I also support that.
I'm Ted Ture, fifth generation Utah, and my family mostly comes from the Garland Tremont area. I have a limited perspective, but significantly equally, that we run the operations for recreational opportunity, depending on this ranch for the best, over the decade, about 18 years now. And despite this ranch changing hands and our operation now being truncated, actually slowing down there, we have the opportunity to manage about a million acres around the state in Wyoming and Montana, and so we have seen over the And so we have seen over the last fifteen years of operating, these ranches change hands and become developed and turned into a full spectrum of different developments. And I have to say, despite our hunting operation being truncated, this group, as has been echoed by several people here, are significantly unique. I've never seen anyone quite so thoughtful and thorough in their evaluation. And first and foremost, being involved in understanding the community and their needs. We will hope to continue to have some involved, but I just wanted to echo what others have said. The other perspective I have over that, over the decade is that I've seen four other plans that other sewers for this property have put forth. And I will say to you that you were dodging a major bullet. There were some disasters that were gonna be proposed. Much more density, much less concern for the community. And I would just echo what has been said, that this group thoughtful group and they can bring an asset to this valley. And they will add jewel to an all that beautiful place without coming away from much from view of anything like that. So I'll just, I'll leave that.
Hello, I'm Tyler George at Dean Creek. Right now, this property is like ninety-nine percent zone F1, which translates, they can build thirty-five cabins on this eleven thousand five hundred acre ranch. That's how the, you know, the general plan was set up years ago. And I'm pretty sure most of the county residents would like it, just remain that way. I've talked to very few people who are in favor of this. Of course, the money is a, you know, a big bonus. We all need more money, we all love money. And that can solve all of our problems. But putting a development the size of Mountain Green, seven hundred and fifty homecoming mountain, is really the last thing that most of us want. So these guys have hired a pretty amazing firm to come in here and basically hypnotize us to make us think this is a good idea. And the type of people that are gonna be buying these homes, are they really the type of people we want in our county? I mean, these people also love money. They've done a really good job at it, so. Forty million for the ranch, three hundred million when they can get all their buy-ins, thirty-seven million five hundred thousand a year in homeowners association fees. It sounds like someone else is gonna get rich too, if you approve this amendment to the general. But if we just keep it the way that it is, they can build thirty-five cabins. And it's not gonna impact anybody. So, this is one of the most beautiful mountains in the world. I've lived here my entire life, but I really never realized until I got older, of coming back into the valley, so. I think their, you know, their plans sugarcoated a little, oh, before and after. There's no way it's gonna look bad, minimally impacted. But, you know, sell thirty-five minutes about cabins. Or seven hundred and fifty, super rich, evil, wicked people than our county does need. You know, and that's the bottom line. And the visual impact, the water. If it's F1, F1 zoning, you're not gonna use two thousand five hundred acre feet of water. The property values are gonna go down in Mountain Green because the rich people there, you know, they're gonna be pretty pissed. And, you know, the common people who wanna ski are gonna still have to go to Park City or Snow Basin. I think it's kind of a slap in the face to do a private development like this. I don't want these people in this county. I hope that you realize that a lot of people like me don't even dare get out to sleep. And I've talked with a dozen people that are, "I'm gonna move." It's like, dude. So that's ridiculous. You're gonna move because they're gonna approve something like this? But a lot of people think this has already been approved. Most people have no clue. You know, they just, they don't have time, they're busy, they're working. And maybe they'll get a job up here, you know, that'd be great. Anyway, I tell you guys, seriously. Just let these developers realize what they bought. It's F1 zoning. Let them get frustrated, let them sell it to somebody else. The kind of person we want up here is gonna build one big lodge, maybe a helipad. You know, let these guys keep their hunting operation. That's a lot of traffic, you know? I feel bad for the residents of Peterson because it's, I mean, I don't even like going to Mountain Green anymore, the traffic's so bad. Can you imagine following all that road in Peterson? So. Pretty much, and the name of Wasatch Peak Ranch, I think if this passed, the locals should call it Mammon Mountain. Google it. Thanks. Can I get the pageant?
Brad Peterson. I'm in favor of this. I'm in favor of this development. For the reason if we don't let somebody decent do a decent plan, you will have someone come in here that doesn't care about what we have here. And I was thinking earlier today, and I talked about this at the last meeting, that the owners of the Wilfensons are trying to develop their land. And trying to do three hundred and fifty homes. I don't know what changed or how it got to be nine hundred and fifty homes. But if we don't allow something nice, we will have somebody come in here and this will look like Campbell Junction, right off Peterson Exchange. It'll be homes everywhere. I don't like change. Really careful with fifty pounds I put on the past ten years. But it happens. And if we say, "We don't want this", we really don't want the people that came in here last week or last month. When I moved here fifteen years, seventeen years ago, to my parts, Gary Bowen and I created the nicest development in the county and now Ed Childs wants to become one of us. And I think he will. I'm still taller than Ed, so I still win. I do, I do believe this is going to be a quality project. We will bring some money from county that without all the rooftops. And I understand what type, you know, the term zoning is, F1 is unrealistic. Could we have a public ski resort here? Can we have Snow Basin right here so we don't have to travel, we'll ski in? Which I don't see, but occasionally. We have, they have five thousand units, I believe, approved for Snow Basin. In Morgan and Weaver camps. I may be wrong, but I, I don't think I know. Do we want five thousand homes up there? I don't. I'd rather see seven hundred and fifty. And then people always talk about that's our viewshed. When I had my home up there in Ridge's, my viewshed was out on the valley floor seeing everybody else. That was my viewshed. So, change is gonna come. I, I think this is going to be a nice development. And I'm okay. Anyone else?
Lance Palmer, I'm from Peterson, Utah, currently in Morgan. My biggest concern is for people who live downhill. They keep saying they're gonna make snow, but you don't pull water from naturally from the air. You gotta get the water from somewhere. Is that gonna affect my parents', is that gonna water downhill? Where's the salt gonna go? It's gonna do all of their roads when they do their, their snow meetings. Is that gonna end up my family's water supply downhill? That's my concern, is what, I mean, let's face it, crap always rolls downhill. What about the people at the bottom of the hill? That's my concern. Where's the salt gonna go? They can't pull water from the air to make their snow, so it really doesn't benefit us, because they gotta get the water from somewhere. So that's my concern. And really, I don't think they're gonna be able to contain their sewage. Seven hundred and fifty homes on that mountain, the crap is always gonna roll downhill. That's my concern. People at the bottom of the hill.
Here we go. Always remember to mark. Ouch.
I'm gonna start with a disclaimer. Oh, my name's Austin Turner. I live in Round Valley, still in Morgan County. I can't see any of this from my house. But my disclaimer is, I've only got an hour and a half sleep in the last twenty-four hours, so. I'm gonna apologize to some people if I affect you ahead of time, so, sorry. Alright. She just had to leave this picture up on the thing. As I sit there, I know it's an industry standard, I know when they did the Snow Basin Development Agreement, they did the same thing. The problem is, is most lodges and stuff are not an eight-foot loom, they're not a ten-foot. And I know last time they came before the public meeting, that was a concern. You can't really tell what they're, I can't. Maybe I'm colorblind, maybe I'm just old. But I can't see any limbs in the other picture. But I'm sure a lodge would look different than that. And so I tried to figure this out for everybody, because to get a real kind of perspective. And I think I've come up with that. Up at Snow Basin, if you've ever been to the Needles Lodge, it's really nice and it's really big. I used to work as a groomer up there for multiple years. If you go down on Trapper's Loop, you can, there's a great check on, it would be the northbound side, there's a great check area. Pull over there. I don't want, I don't want anybody driving and trying to see the Needles Lodge. But I'm here to tell you, it's give or take about the same distance and you can't see it from, right? If you know where you're looking, because most people, it's gonna take you quite a while. Maybe you can cheat and use binoculars to see the Needles Lodge up at the top of Snow Basin. If you don't know exactly where it is, it's gonna be hard to see. It, it really is. And so, it's, it's give or take about the same view that you're gonna get from the Peterson Exchange in to look at this lodge. It's clear in there. And, not to be too offensive, but when I was on the county council, I always struggled with the fact that there's people in the community that weren't worried about their own septic system affecting their well on their property, but were concerned about the septic system several miles away. I always scratched my head and tried to figure out how that worked. They're not worried about their own septic system, but someone else's past their neighbors and past their neighbors' neighbors would affect their groundwater, but not their own, nor their neighbors', nor anybody in a certain area. So I, I never could quite figure that out, maybe I'm just slow. Anyway, we've worked on this for multiple, multiple, well, a year and a half, two years. We've had a lot of discussions. The thing that probably shocked me the most is when I first met with them and started talking to them. Most developers come in, they promise you the world, and then they wanna turn all the roads over to you, all the everything. And it even comes in the development agreements. No offense to Snow Basin, you aren't here, but Snow Basin did that. Part of their development agreement is they're gonna make sure that the roads hold up for a year. I think that was the standard, a year, maybe a little bit more. And then they would be turned over to the county. The only road they weren't gonna turn over to the county was their main street. Because they wanted to have control over where, how their main street worked. And it's in the development agreement, you can look for it. These guys came in and they said, "We wanna keep the roads in perpetuity forever. They're gonna keep the roads and they're gonna maintain the roads." So, if there's a landslide take out, ten miles worth of their roads, it's not the county's problem, it's their problem. It's something they're gonna have to deal with and manage on a yearly basis. Just like the county has to deal with and manage on a yearly basis, the rest of the county. When it comes to the bike path, okay, awesome, let's do the bike path, okay? Wasatch Peaks has given the county nine million dollars. What people don't realize is right now, the county budget's about eight million dollars. But less than three million dollars of that comes from property tax. So they're gonna take that three million dollar line item, they're gonna add nine million to it. Let's say half of them are second homes, or primary residents. They're still gonna be adding a bunch to that, okay? No offense to, remember Barber, who I used to work with? And the Ridge's. But I was talking to somebody over in the Enterprise area, and this is what they had to say about the Ridge's. During the daytime, completely awesome, you can't even hardly see anybody over there. At night, you can see a few lights, but hey, whatever. They weren't upset by, by the Ridge's being over there. And the poor people on the Ridge's side, you're exactly right, they have to look over and see everybody on the Enterprise side. But this guy in Enterprise said, "From my house, you will not be able to see Wasatch Peaks project." It's gonna be up over the ridge line and down into that, into Peterson Bowl. It won't be visible from his house. The tax value, I was talking to some school board members. This file, get ready. I'm not gonna say any more than that, but this file, get ready. Come to the truth in taxation. Thanks.
I'll be really quick, Marsha, wait a minute, it's gonna be great. I just feel like I wanna make a comment, because I don't think we can characterize, and I think maybe the comments made any joke, but I've heard other comments too, but I just don't think we can that we can characterize rich or poor people coming into our county as evil or bad. There's, there's good or bad in all people, so. I just have to say that. And I think that if people come into our county, we need to just look at it as people and welcome them in. And so that comment, as far as I've been able to see, this has been a well-cut out, well-planned development. And so I, I think it would be a great opportunity to move forward and see what, see what happens. So, anyway, I've been impressed with what I've seen so far.
Thank you.
I'm Brad Peterson, I'm over in Star, but I grew up riding in that mountain. There's not much of that place I haven't covered by foot. There is water everywhere up there. Especially this year. Everywhere you ride is a hollow or a seat or a spring or a tree. There's a significant impact to be had by complete development of the area. Now, they talk about the Yellowstone Club. How about that? What happened? The Yellowstone Club went bankrupt. What happens then? Who picked, once again, who picks up the pieces? It's like Austin said, Enterprise. They were supposed, all those developments, Enterprise was handling those. He's doing that, counts. And I'm also a relative of Thomas Jefferson Thurston. And I think he'd be rolling over and he's great. I think that there needs, development's gonna come and we need to have responsible development. And I, in my last season, I just want to alert caution by this planning commission of what they decide. And if you don't have all the facts, don't vote on it tonight. You just turned down a gentleman's, no, not turned down, postponed an eleven acre subdivision. This is eleven thousand five hundred acres. Until we have the facts, there shouldn't be a vote. And one last thing. The majority of the people that I've heard stand up here tonight in support of this thing, they may not have sole they may not have sold their farms, they may not have cashed out yet, but they stand to make a substantial amount, because they, every one of them, border that advantage.
Thank you, Kelly, not a break. Just want to thank you for your service. I don't, I don't know a shared position in the future of the decision yet today. I had a couple things, you know, I mean, we don't have a conflict of interest. I don't know why having a joint property to develop, that's going to be before you, it may constitute a conflict of interest. And it doesn't. That's the other thing, but we do not have a conflict of interest under any statute on this thing. Because I had to say that, because if that's true, we all have conflict of interest. Whenever an application can form, that's happened, but not our problem. The other thing is, I've been through the funding processes for a number of years, and the person who's been here longer than me has done it. She was, she was in meetings long before I left. Well, the process, the people, I have a good friend who grew up here, and her family's from here. And she did not like seeing the subdivision that I was in, kind of like. But she's loved a lot of friends in her home and in her community, and been able to accept the change that came because of that, and the road became that. In one of the funding processes that we went through, we said, "This is the road that they're predicting they'll have." This is a vision, Morgan. Would you rather see the road, or would you rather see that road?" And lots of different groups went through lots of different mans, and lots of different littles. That's the road here, that's the road there. What they would rather be seeing, they would rather ride that road. And they said, "Create four resort districts east in, at the east in Marina, at the Round Valley Golf Course, at Snow Basin, and Peterson Mountain." That, that those are the sort of areas that they would create. They'd rather see the roads, but they have the mountain and that before. I don't know how that's gonna look. I've talked to a lot of developers in the last, what, 20 years, in, in the office. They often have good and bad about their developments, and they've all brought good and bad into the community. This development from the beginning has passed what the community wants, haven't they? Haven't they made this look powerful so that it's not so bad they're buying these apartments? And that's what we did, a lot of these apartments. And now they want to develop, and I agree that they have certain rights to it, and they should do that. If they did that, it would look a lot worse than it's going to look developing in a resort special district development. Now, I'm just not saying I'm for or against, I'm just saying, these people have come, and they've met with the funding commission, they've asked the county council member, they've asked the community, they've asked what your concerns are, they've tried to address them. And when it looked, there was even a funding commission group that met with the Petersons, county council members, and, 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 when they realized that it was gonna be a new shed, they made a decision to change what they were going to do. And that took me, that's what took me a while, because they did care that it was gonna have an impact. They didn't have to make that change in their, in their application that they did. So, again, I thank you for your service. You have a hard decision to make about what's going forward, and what's gonna master, and what's gonna best your end of the community.
Uh, my name's Andrew Allen, I'm a resident of Peterson, Utah. Um, for me, I know that many of the young adults of this county don't support the size and scope of this development. And I hear a lot of them talking about it, obviously, most of them aren't here. But, uh, they probably have got something to talk about, speaking of. I plan to live in Morgan County, and I plan to see a lot of change, but I, I think the 750 minutes is much too large. 475 is much too large. And I just wanted on record that I opposed it.
My name's Kami Bowman, I'm a resident of Morgan County this time, and I hope to become a future candidate. Our family owns the 160 acres that Stephen Sessions lovingly called Bowman Popmark in the middle of this gorgeous mountain. But to us, it's not a popmark, it's, um, property that's been in the family for over 100 years. And I just wanted to stand and publicly say that I oppose this project. And not because I don't feel like they are trying to celebrate slowly to everybody, try to get everybody on their side. But I feel like there does need to be more education, more, um... More progress as far as exactly how they're going to do this. Exactly where the houses are, exactly how they will use natural resources. And I realize that all of those points will be made coming forward. But I think each step of the way, we need to say yes together with them. Instead of having them just bulldoze them forward because they have any complaints. Thank you.
My name's Michael Allen, and I've, uh, I've lived in Peterson right now. My family's lived in, in the Morgan County for, since the beginning, before the railroad came through. My concern with it is, uh, water. This year, we've got abundance of water, and I have one-half acre, uh, one-half share of water in the Peterson Creek. And that's what I use to water my vegetable garden and my fruit trees. It's abundant this year. Other years, it's not abundant. And I'm wondering, what are this, how many acre-feet have you got? 250,000 acre-feet? A lot of water. Where's that going to come from? It's gonna come out of my creek, it's gonna come out of my pipeline. Because, uh, there's years when, when we don't have water. Dry years. We'll, uh, we'll buy water from the Bowman Reservoir, uh, and they're good neighbors. Another concern I have is, uh, all during my lifetime, I've always had the opportunity to go up at the invitation of the Bowman family to, to recreate, go up and have a picnic, uh, enjoy the place. And I'm afraid that those opportunities might diminish. I understand the Bowman properties right where the golf course is supposed to be, and they're concerned about how that will affect wildlife, the elk, the animals. They're gonna trample on the golf course, and that's gonna cost a buck. So those are the concerns that I have. I, I think, it's, it sounds so exclusive to me that if I'm gonna be gated out of the place. My posterity would like, as you mentioned, would like to live in Morgan County. One of those houses up there is not gonna be in this budget. People with modest needs. My posterity, as the Bowman family is, they'd love to live up here, but it's a pretty exclusive place right now. I don't think I can afford to live here, I haven't been here forever. So that's what I've got to say, I, I have mixed feelings. We don't have any, any, uh, public property in Morgan County. There's very, very little recreational property. One proposal that I did hear was, uh, allowing roadway up to the peaks where there's national forest land, where it can be enjoyed. I don't know if they, if they would consider that, but the walkways that they've talked about, that sounds wonderful. Anyway, those are my concerns, is my water, uh, and the opportunities for young people and our recreational opportunities. Thank you.
Any more? Can I have a public hearing? Second. Folks in second or in favor? We're now out of public hearing. For this item on our end. For the planning commission here, for your information, I'll remind you that our bylaws talks about 10:00 PM and any decisions after that. Can we, do you have that handy? If not, I think I have one. I just can't remember what it's called. Not that often that we get this late evening, so we don't look at it. So our bylaws say, the planning commission is discussing an agenda item, but has not voted on the item before 10. The planning commission may take a vote to decide whether to vote on the agenda item, continue discussion of the item for a set period of time, and vote on a set item or to continue the item for the next appropriate reason. So just, we've got nine minutes of discussion before we get to the plan. Those, those are the options that we have. Okay. Staff, there's, is there any low-hanging fruit that you wanna address with, with some of these, some of these questions? I took a lot of notes. Particularly in, in the process. Maybe, maybe just explain one more time that the application is for, the RSD application comes with the development agreement, so both would need to be put through at the same time?
That is correct. The zoning change is resort special district, that ordinance requires it to be in conjunction with an approval of, the rezone includes the approval of the development agreement. So the development agreement becomes governing for this new RSD zone.
Okay, so the, the development agreement, um, I'm kinda talking to everybody at the same time. The development agreement covers things like, let me go through some of the questions we had. Design standards is an example. So design standards are in there, um, wildlife?
Yes, well, and then staff has proposed changes that would address more of the issues that we heard from Travel Unlimited and that type of thing, so that the open space has a better plan. I think the advocate is planning to do that, they just, the commitment to do it would be in the development agreement. It outlines the uses, the use table, uh, the number of units, um, you know, loading, row grades.
Oh, that would be outlined in the development agreement.
Correct. Anything the development agreement then addressed would fall back, there's no counting zoning ordinance or subdivision.
Okay. Um, also, open space, there was the question about how can we preserve that open space if nobody can come and develop?
So, and, and we, it's not in a conservation easement, but the open space management plan, at least as I understand it, would be through the development agreement, so it'd be a contractual, um, obligation for that property. It would not, it's not a conservation easement, but it is a mechanism to preserve that land as open space with the rules and guidelines that are in the development agreement. So, I mean, the ski resort would be on that, the golf course would count for that open space. Those would be allowed items in there. But as, I think it would be pretty close to what a conservation easement would do. Which would, a conservation easement on a piece of property would simply set up the rules and parameters for how that property is used. And that's what open space management plan is.
Okay, so the development agreement covers that concern as well. Or anything else that was asked tonight that the development agreement would cover? There, there's a lot of other questions here, I think better, better, you know, require a lot more discussion to, to get the answers to. What about fire wise precautions, would that be something in the development agreement as well? I've heard, I've heard concerns, not concerns, just, yeah, concerns about how's that? How do the two fire districts merge together, what's, what's the plan for fire safety? We have heard from a...
As proposed in the development agreement, they would be an autonomous, separate fire district. That would be, have to be set up and approved, uh, through those processes. Now, that would, once they, if the rezone, uh, is granted, and this becomes a resort special district, then, then, then they start doing a lot more work than they've already set up those districts for it to grant.
I know we're already getting this, but I would really like more information from our fire officials to make sure that we, that as we continue this discussion through the development agreement.
And that's, in the, going to this public hearing, that's one of the things that I, I really didn't touch much on in the staff report, but will be included as we go forward. The, the development agreement addresses it now, but I think there's some concern about that, that will, so we can do it.
So, any questions for staff?
I, I have a lot of questions, I have a lot of, I have a lot of...
Okay. Why don't we, let's, let's do this then. Does the advocate want to answer, address anything tonight?
I don't think there was anything in particular in the background.
Okay. So we have, we have a lot of notes. Just for the public's information, this, this is a very, very comprehensive proposal. And we haven't had a district rate for a year and a half, there's, there's a lot to go through. I'll give you my personal opinion, I'm in absolutely no position to make a decision on this right now. We've gotten to four minutes by our bylaws to decide what we're gonna do, but we can, we can make a decision before that for sure. So if you guys want to further the discussion, that's one thing, if not, um, we can take a motion. Whichever way you guys want me.
Well, what would my opinion be, or is I think I would be more comfortable asking the management commission to vote on this? I have, of course, I might flesh out, I would like to be in the planning, if that's appropriate for session. I'd like to go through some of the issues I see there, so that I understand if that would be a vote. So I could ultimately, I want to be...
We would have a, a public meeting, I mean, I understand your purpose for work session, but that's essentially what, what we could do. It would just be at a regular scheduled public meeting, that would work for you? Wouldn't it?
Continue.
Continuation.
Continuation of this.
Next meeting. Um, our next meeting, which would be July 11th?
Staff.
That'll be staff. Continuation of public hearing, 11 July, what do you think?
I, I believe we can have, continue a discussion. I think there's, uh, there's still, um... We won't have a lot of time between here and then, in just those two weeks, to really get into a lot more detail. But I think we've got a lot in front of us. And so, I mean, I think the discussion will be fine, but there will not be a lot more, uh, information coming forward unless the advocates and staff are...
So you're, you're about, the applicant's available for some dialogue? Get to that? Okay, go ahead, you want? Continue. Continue the public hearing?
Sorry.
Until 11 July? Okay, we have a motion to continue this public hearing until 11 of July. We have a second? You have a second, all those in favor? Aye? Want to thank everybody again, it's been a pretty long night, and you guys did a lot of, a lot of great information.